I'd like to welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the Abington School Committee on Tuesday, April 25th, 2023, here at the Middle High School Library. If we could all please stand for the salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we start the hearing of visitors, I know there's going to be people here to talk about school safety, and I know the police chief is here tonight. I'm going to ask you, though, to direct comments to me and not directly to the police chief. If at any point we want to ask him a question, it's fine, but ask it directly through me, and then we'll go to the police chief if we need it. Okay? So with that, if anybody would like to speak during the hearing of visitors, please raise your hand, and you'll have to state your name and address at the podium. Go ahead.
My name's Caitlin Carroll. I live on 9 Orchard Lane. So I'm a family nurse practitioner. I work in the pediatric field, and I just want to go over a few statistics. Firearms are now the leading cause of death for American children and teens at a rate of 5.6 per 100,000 children. This is the highest by far among our peer countries. For example, Canada is the next highest at only 0.8 per 100,000. It's now been 24 years since Columbine. Since then, there have been 377 school shootings. Just last year, there was 177 incidents of gunfire in our schools, resulting in seven deaths. We don't want Abington to be a part of these tragic statistics. We don't want our children included in these numbers. Regardless of political views on gun control, we cannot sit and wait for policies to change in Washington. We need to protect our community's children. I am here as a parent of three young children, asking the school committee to make full-time SRO coverage at each school a reality and a priority. Our community is fortunate to have two school resource officers, but we have three schools, and our SROs are not always at the schools. They can be pulled by the APD, and they're not replaced during vacations, sick days, trainings, et cetera. After the Nashville shooting, I was super distraught, like most parents. I was able to speak to Peter, and he, and I was really encouraged after our conversation to know that the topic of safety in schools is not being forgotten. The schools do such a great job with Alice drills. They do biweekly meetings to discuss students who might be struggling. There are rules in place to keep the doors locked. There are cameras in the schools that the Abington Police can view. All of these tools are in place if, God forbid, a shooting ever happened. But I think our priority and focus needs to change on deterring, sorry, deterring a shooter from ever attempting. A SRO at each school doesn't only represent protection by an armed, ready-to-immediately- respond officer, but even more so as a deterrent from an event ever being attempted. We know that the latest school shooting in Nashville, the shooter conducted a surveillance of the building before carrying out the massacre. We know, and we know there was no police officer present at the school. Obviously, we can't make assumptions, but it would be interesting to see what would have happened if a police car was out front and an armed police officer was inside. We know that budget and competing priorities are a major concern. However, I feel like we can work together creatively to make this happen. Our kids and our teachers deserve to feel safe at school.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Go ahead, Melanie. Melanie, you just state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Melanie Whitney, 70 Logan Berry Drive. There's been a lot of chatter about school safety, and I think a lot of people have different, differing views on various aspects. And I heard a couple of questions that came to me on my thoughts, and I just wanted to pass them along to the committee and to the extent applicable to our police chief to just get their thoughts. The first question, and I can just leave this up here in case anyone wants to refer to my questions, if that's easier. How do we, as a school and a police department, think about and address cultural or personal experience spectrums with our uniformed officers? What I'm getting at there is someone who may have trauma in their past, how they would feel about a uniform officer, and how do our SROs interact with students with a history of trauma or may have a negative history with law enforcement? That's question one. Question two is, can you briefly explain ongoing trainings for SROs? I don't know the answers to any of these questions, and I think the community is curious. So although, me personally, I don't have these questions, I think it's worth it for us to address to the community so that it's very clear as to these two topics. That's all. I'll leave this up here in case anyone wants it.
Chief, would you mind? Would you mind helping us address some of those questions? Just Police Chief David Del Papa, Abington Police Department.
Good evening. So in respect to your first question, I've spoken with the SROs, and both have indicated to me that they have not had any experiences so far with any students that have had cultural or negative personal experiences with law enforcement. As far as how they would address those scenarios if they did arise, the answer is through training. It all starts at the brown level with treating with everybody with dignity and respect, and then training to deal with those new and arising situations. As far as the training for the SROs, I just put together a little description of the training that they've undergone and will be undergoing. All our SROs undergo a 40-hour certification through the National School Resource Officers Course. After that, they receive a 16-hour in-service training each year, the curriculum set by the MPTC. In addition to that, they attend an annual school safety conference, which is for juvenile officers and school resource officers. This year's conference will touch on such topics as supporting students during reentry from long-term medical absence, comfort dogs in schools, rescue task force, youth police academies, sexual assault investigations, recognizing exploited children, social media investigations. In addition to that, both of our school resource officers have specialized training in adolescent mental health training. One is an Alice instructor that's alert, lockdown, conform, counter, and evacuate training instructor. The other one is scheduled to go. One of the SROs is a RAD and a RAD Kids instructor as well. In addition to that, all of our offices undergo training, in-service training, have gone or undergoing it now in trauma-informed policing that helps our officers identify and explain the various forms of trauma, as well as their wider impacts, and how to integrate trauma-informed approaches into our policing practices. Officers' response to interpersonal violence. The officers learned the best practices of trauma-informed investigations of sexual assaults, human trafficking, domestic violence, and missing children. Training in responding to emergencies of those with mental health and mental illness issues. They learned the proper communication techniques and ways to diffuse and de-escalate emergencies involving mental health crises. Cultural competency training, it's understanding the many cultural differences among people and how to, how those differences potentially affect behaviors and attitudes. Implicit bias training. Mental health first aid training. We're currently working on certifying all our officers in CIT training, which is a 40-hour course. In addition to all those regular specialized trainings, we just conducted active shooter training in the fall, and we're going to be conducting ASHER training, which is a new form of training. It's active shooter hostile event response. That's basically active shooter training in conjunction with the fire department. So not only are you addressing the threat, but you're helping triage and deal with those individuals that may be suffering from gunshot wounds or injuries as the result of that event. We've also made many equipment upgrades to quickly and effectively address any sort of hostile situation we encounter at the schools. For obvious reasons, I can't get into discussing one of those, but I'm confident in saying that one of the best equipped departments around will address those concerns. I believe that answered both. You're welcome. Sir?
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Sure, go ahead. Just please state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Lindsay Young, and I live at 47 Mulberry Drive. I am here today to read you an online petition we have created. The petition states, "I am an Abington, Mass. resident, and I support a full-time police officer dedicated to each Abington school building, three total during school hours. For context, Abington currently has two school resource officers that float between buildings but can get called away for patrol calls and are not backfilled during vacations, training, et cetera. Our kids deserve to feel safe at school. This is one tangible step we can take as a town to ensure that there is equitable onsite security coverage between buildings. Please sign your name as an Abington resident to bring much-needed attention to this critical cause. Thank you." In just one week's time, this petition has been electronically signed by 163 parents, teachers, and students within the district. Please listen to what your parents are asking for and work with the police, town manager, powers that be, in order to make this a reality. We already know how impeccable the training is for the officers for these types of horrific situations, but our goal here is to avoid having to use it. Our goal here is to deter and prevent any type of tragedy here in our small town. Between budget dollars, available grants, and provide funding, we can make this happen if it is made a priority. Our kids deserve this. Our kids deserve to feel safe at school. Thank you.
Thank you. Just please state your name and address.
My name is Allison Limball. I live at 438 Randolph Street. Excuse my appearance, I just got back from the game. I'm a senior here at Abington High School, and I'm here tonight to provide some student perspective on the topic of safety. I believe that we, as students, parents, and administrators, would all feel safer and more secure with a full-time officer at all times at all buildings. Although we can never be 100% safe, a school resource officer would provide peace of mind for students that if something were to happen, we'd at least have an armed-trained police presence immediately available. As previously mentioned, gun violence is killing our kids, and though I'm not someone who's big on guns, I'd rather have a trusted and trained officer than an intruder, or, God forbid, a student. As much as we trust our administrators, they're not fully trained to handle a dangerous emergency situation, and statistically speaking, these events are usually over in five minutes or less, so the chances of contacting and receiving emergency services is not good. Unfortunately, our current situation regarding school resource officers leaves us vulnerable. And with our current officers being pulled away for other schools or to cover non-related events or lack of coverage, we're, I would say, defenseless. I'm here representing the kids that you, as the school committee and administrators, have been hired or elected to protect, and especially at this day and age, we are concerned, sorry, for our safety and feel as though there are ways we could further be protected. Please listen to our concerns and work to make this coverage a reality because we deserve to feel safe. We want to live on to go to college and grow up and protect our families, so please work with town officials, the police department, and come to a mutually beneficial solution, whether it be budgeting, grants, there has to be some way to make it happen. Everyone loves to think that it couldn't happen here, but it could be anywhere. I'm sure they said the same things in Uvalde, in Newton, Nashville, and we don't want to be the next statistic. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak?
Hey, everybody. I'm Shawna Torpe, 30 Pine Tree Lane, Abington. Many of you know me. I am a resident. I'm also a mom of four, and some of you may remember I spoke last year at the school committee meeting last June, voicing my concerns about school safety in light of the Uvalde tragedy. I just couldn't get the image of bloodstained green Converse out of my head, and we're here almost a year later, and I still can't get that image out of my head, and there's been X amount more school shootings since then. I think you've heard from kind of a lot of us already tonight, but I just want to say, since then, we have, since that last school committee meeting that I was attending last June, we have worked to form a district-wide parent safety group that meets with Superintendent Schaefer as well as Dr. Michelle regularly. The group's mission is to work alongside the administration to ensure the district of Abington's students and staff are protected to the best of our ability while attending school. Our goals center around improving coverage, personnel coverage, mainly SRO coverage, building infrastructure and equipment, policies and training, and screening at-risk kids, which we're doing a wonderful job at. While we've made progress at the margins this year, including organizing a safety inspection between the administration and the Abington Police and Fire Departments, and exploring ways to enhance our entryways at Beaverbrook and Woodsdale Elementary Schools, we seem to be hitting constant roadblocks stemming mainly from budgetary concerns to make meaningful progress. I'm here tonight to make the school committee and the members of the public aware that this group exists, and we're here to hopefully help enlist all of your help for change. In my opinion, nothing is more important than the safety of our children. It is one thing to say this, as I think all of us in this room will agree to that. It's quite another to act on it by devoting tangible budgetary dollars to make this a reality. Please give this topic the attention it deserves and support our group with our improvement efforts. I am first and foremost here to ask the school committee to work with us to increase our SRO coverage to one full-time officer at each school building. I was told by one administrator that she sees police coverage more on a weekly basis or an as-needed basis than on a daily basis. Well, I hope to God that the shooter doesn't decide to act during, say, 85, 90% of the time that they're not there, when every literal second matters. An unnamed teacher was quoted saying, "I rarely see officers at school due to their busy schedules. In all honesty, I know that if something were to ever happen at my school, I'd just have to deal with it on my own." This is our current reality, but I believe we, as a town, can do better than this. Let's start by making full-time officer coverage at each building a top priority. I urge the school committee and administration to help us make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Go ahead.
Hi. Lisa Brown, 64, Nash Memorial Road. I didn't actually plan to speak tonight, but this is just such an emotional and distressing topic for everyone. I really appreciate everyone who's gotten up to speak about it already. I think it's also just important to think about and focus on all the different things within our control for student safety, and also, you know, that includes physical safety and psychological safety. And, you know, I don't have any comments tonight about the SRO discussion. I appreciate everyone's viewpoint, and I'm still kind of learning about all the different pieces of that, but I just would love to also hear a discussion about what we're doing, continue to do for mental health in our schools with the students, and also supports for families in our community, because, you know, certainly, you know, somewhere at the root cause of some of these issues are mental health issues, so I just would love to continue to hear a discussion. I know we talked about the new CARE-SOLIS program a couple of months ago, I think, but, you know, would love to just continue to hear that as part of this conversation as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak? And I'm going to close the hearing of visitors this time. Before I do, I just want to say, I think I don't want to speak for everybody here, but student safety is an absolute top priority for everybody, everywhere, I would hope. In terms of how that gets accomplished, I think we're always continuing to look at any and all best practices partnering with the Abington Police Department. We have a wonderful relationship, a partnership there. I know we can continue to do that. Exact things that can happen, those are discussions that have to occur. I don't know if, do you want to add anything? Wendy, did you want to say?
I just, I actually just have a question for the chief. Can you tell me from the police department how long it takes to get to Beaverbrook, the high school, and Woodsdale? Do you know? Like, you guys must have timed that, right? Less than a minute. I think that's pretty good. I mean, and I'm not trying to take anything away. I definitely know safety is a priority. However, I think that our kids are pretty safe in these buildings. I know that the district has done a lot to ensure that that happens, and for being a small town and being a minute away to Woodsdale is pretty exceptional. And looking at, I can't even tell you which one it was, but there was an SRO officer at a school that had a shooting, and that SRO officer was there and didn't do anything about it. So I think it depends on the person, the SRO, like, not really, you know, we could have an SRO in every building, but that doesn't mean that they're actually going to act if there's something going on, you know? So just a different way of looking at it, that we could have a body there, and we could spend $80,000, $120,000, whatever it is, but that doesn't mean that they're actually going to do something. It's, you know, hopefully they do, but I'm just saying, like, there's another part of it that, you know, hopefully everybody has the guts, or the SROs, to actually move in and do something. So, I don't know. That's it.
Chief, can I ask you just one quick follow-up? Because obviously, there was plenty of discussion about an SRO in every building, and I don't know, I don't know outside of Abington. I don't know if through your peers, if there's been any discussions about what other towns' setups are like in this. I guess I'm looking in the South Shore, and I'm not looking all over the country, but around the other South Shore, I just, I don't know. I'm guessing that the budgetary constraints may be there throughout other towns as well. I don't know if you can share any light, shed any light on what other towns' SRO status are, and... Okay. Okay.
Yeah, can I just ask, though, Cable, are you able to pick up any of this information? Because this is obviously a very important topic to everybody in the room, but then everybody in the community, so... Okay. Did any, did any of that really great answer by the chief make the, you're the best? Abington student.
The intentional, they will go back to their original assignments, which is Monday through Friday assigned to the school because of the, because of the staffing shortages we had, we had no other choice. It had to be realized. Ultimately, that is the goal. Hoping within the next year? Hopefully. But I don't want to promise anything, I can't deliver. You're welcome.
So if I could, just for a moment, Dr. Michelle has a presentation about safety and about 20 different things that we do that's going to completely miss the mark for this group, because none of those things include adding a school resource officer to what we already have. And I don't think anybody would disagree that statistically speaking, you'd be better off with an armed, trained officer at each building, and if that were something that Abington could do, I don't think anybody, you know, you may get some objections in the community, but I don't think there would be many. I, I think we accept that with a lot of, you know, a lot of gratefulness that we've got that in our system. To date, the resources haven't been there to provide that coverage. I'm going to tell you, after the years of doing the job that I've been doing, the most important thing is to have a productive, collaborative relationship with your police department. I've never worked with better leadership. I've never worked with better school resource officers than the individuals that we are currently working with. If I had my choice between having a resource officer at every building or having a very, very thorough, thoughtful, productive, open, honest relationship between the two departments, if I could have one or the other, I'd love to have both. If I could have one or the other, I'd have what we have with the leadership in the police department and with the SROs that we have, because we dive down into issues until we pull every string that we can find, until there are no more strings to pull as things begin to unravel. That does not mean that we are safe. There is no way for me to say, in this society, with the violence that we have, that we are, I feel like we're totally safe. That's not going to happen. And you're going to see this presentation, and you're going, oh, it's great, they do all these things. Wow, I didn't know we did that. It's great, too. But I can't tell you we're going to be 100% safe. But that's, I think, that philosophy is what keeps us the safest that we can be, because it's an ongoing effort to continue to dive down, to dive down, because we do these drills, and, and I'm telling you, the hair on your body stands up as you do these drills, because you take them seriously. There's a sense of purpose here, protecting the people that, that come to these buildings every single day, the kiddos. You drive away and pray and you hope that the people in charge put their lives before all else. The staff do that. That doesn't mean we're 100% safe. So nobody's going to disagree that having an additional resource officer wouldn't, wouldn't be a good thing. It's just, to date, it hasn't been available with our, with our current resources in this town. And to be honest, you know, I feel fortunate that we have what we have. Never going to be enough, always going to want to do more, but it hasn't been available with the current resources. You brought, someone brought up the good point about mental health. You see in our budget, we've added adjustment counselors. That's a part of this, taking care of the needs of our population so that we don't have kids that feel isolated, feel alone, feel disenfranchised, want to hurt themselves and hurt other people. We're trying to do that work, and we can't do enough work in that area either. The CARE-SOLIS program, they gave those cards to the chief. He's been, he's been kind enough that the officers in the Abington Police Department are going to carry those cards in their cruisers, and if the family's in crisis, he's going to pass those out. I just, we got to, we got to get a hold of them for the fire department and the Learn to Cop group, because it also includes help with addiction. So I don't want to stake too much from the end of tonight with Felicia's presentation. I'm sorry, Felicia, I let the air out of your presentation already. It's a wonderful presentation, but it doesn't talk about adding an SRO, and, but I just needed to, I just needed to say those things.
Thank you. And thank you to everybody who came, expressed their thoughts. We appreciate it. Chief, thank you so much for coming to the time. My only ask is, if it's possible, the SRO training that you read earlier, is it possible to share with the superintendent, who can maybe distribute it out to the district, to the parents, to the constable? Thank you very much.
Do you want to do?
Yes. Guys, I'm just going to skip around for one second. I'm going to jump to the award, okay?
Yeah.
So we're going to move on to the presentation of the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents Certificate of Academic Excellence. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Schaefer.
So, and I'm going to ask Christina, Christina to help me. We have, the award is from the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, and it's a certificate of academic excellence, and our winner is...
So our winner is Ryan Libby. I just wrote a few things about Ryan, because I've been his guidance counselor for the past four years. From the start, he has been a mature, hardworking, independent, and humble young man. Academically, he stands apart from his peers. He has been enrolled in the most rigorous and demanding course that Abington High School offers, and has performed exceptionally well across all subjects. It's extremely rare for me to see perfect scores of 100 on a student's transcript, but that is what you will see when you look at Ryan's records. This is most impressive given Ryan, excuse me, involvement in extracurricular activities. He has been a four-year, two-season athlete in the sports of basketball and lacrosse, which he is currently the captain of. He is a member of the student council and has been working at part-time jobs since 2019. Ryan's hard work and dedication to his STEM classes in particular has earned him numerous awards, including the Rensselaer Medal, which recognizes students who have distinguished themselves in math and science. themselves in math and science. Ryan plans to pursue a career in mechanical engineering at UMass Amherst, which you just told me about, so that's really exciting. And I cannot think of a more perfect fit for him. It is an honor to present the Mass Certificate of Academic Excellence to the valedictorian of the class of 2023, Ryan Libby.
Peter, just get a picture. Ryan, we're going to make you take a picture. Can you have your parents come in?
Well, I'll take it so you can be in. I can take it and then...
Congratulations, Ryan. We're very excited for you. Is it UMass?
I'm going to send it to Heidi. All right, I'm going to jump back to the reading and approval of the minutes. So the first one we have up is March 28th, which was our last regular meeting. There's only, and I, I don't even, it's not really part of the thing, Wendy was, Wendy couldn't be there, so Wendy wasn't present at that meeting. So I think, looking through the rest, I'm good to make a motion amended to have Wendy as not marked as absent from that meeting.
Sorry. I can second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then next up, we're going to do them separately, are two executive sessions for discussion of the new parameters of a superintendent contract. The first one is February 28th. We're going to do them separately, so if anyone make a motion to approve the February 28th executive session?
I'll make a motion.
We'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then March 22nd, which was done virtually, is the last one.
I can make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you guys very much. Jumping up, report the Director of Curriculum Instruction. I think Ms. Park, you're just going to go, or is Dr. Bostick going to? Okay. You guys can figure that out.
Okay, hello again. I'm Christina Park, Director of Guidance. A lot of this information is a repeat of last year, but I just wanted to give a refresher on the department. Counselor breakdown, so we have three guidance counselors at the high school. We split students up by their last name. So Sarah McGinnis has students A through F, I have students G through M, and Jessica Tasha has students N through Z. And we discuss social emotional needs, academic counseling, course selection, post-secondary planning, and new student registrations. And students have the same counselor all four years. Every year, we do group lessons with our classes. So for grade nine, we do an orientation to high school, which goes over the graduation requirements, GPA, academic eligibility, attendance policy, and clubs and activities. Grade 10 is an introduction to our Naviance program, which is a college and career readiness program. Grade 11 is post-secondary planning. We do the overview of the post-secondary planning process and use more Naviance college application features. And then we continue with that in grade 12, and we help students create a Common App, the application process, and again, more Naviance with those students. Guidance events, we hold a lot of events throughout the year. I'm not going to list them all, but you can see them here. A few highlights that we have coming up is Senior Decision Day, which is next Monday. So seniors are encouraged to wear their, their decision on Monday. Come down to Guidance, we'll have some little raffles and some pictures, so it should be a good time. And then we also have a field trip coming up to a construction site, so any student that is interested in getting into construction, we could take about 10 students. It is held at Mass, Massa Soyet. That's in a couple weeks, so we're going to be advertising for students to sign up for that. New this year, for college information sessions during Bridge Block, we've never invited colleges to come to speak to our students, and we decided that that was something that was important. So we had four colleges come and speak during Bridge Block, and it was Bridgewater State, UMass Dartmouth, Bryant, and UMass Boston. Hopefully, next year, we'll secure more colleges to come and speak to our students, just to talk about their application process, because every college has different requirements. So it's nice to hear from a range of schools. We also developed the monthly guidance newsletter, which hopefully some of you have seen, just showcasing all of the events that Guidance has to offer. And we put up a TV screen in the Guidance Department, which also shows all the events so that the students are more aware of what's going on. We partnered with CARE-SOLIS with the help of the Adjustment Counselors Administration, the School Psychologist, to just help our students and families get more access to mental health support. And we developed the Mass Hire partnership, which is a really great opportunity for our students that allows just those career-based field trips. We did a STEM career field trip to Bridgewater State back in March. We just did a Career Day conference. And again, we have that construction day coming up. So just exposing our students to more careers and getting them, you know, more thinking about what they want to do after high school. Strengths, we have an experienced staff. All of us have been doing it for more than 10-plus years, so we've been doing this for a long time. We have an ongoing commitment to social and emotional wellbeing and the academic success of all students. We collaborate amongst all stakeholders, and we are very strong with technology and These are the areas of growth that I presented last year, so we wanted to increase student knowledge on the variety of post-secondary options available to them, and I feel like the Mass Hire partnership has, is the start of exposing students to, to different types of careers and educational opportunities. We have increased the information sessions during Bridge Block by adding those colleges to come in, but we also increased our group sessions with our juniors to, from one session to two sessions. We do one with the juniors in January and in June. Continue to provide resources to students through multiple modalities, because we found that a lot of students don't technically read their emails all the time, so we wanted to make sure that we were giving them all the information in so many different ways. So with the monthly newsletter, the TV screen in Guidance, we have the Canvas page, we've been doing the assemblies. We did a scholarship assembly a couple weeks ago, and we've had, I think we've made a record in terms of students actually passing in the town scholarship application, which we had student, 80 students pass in this year, which is great. And then again, to continue education on local mental health resources available to our students. Again, we partnered with CARE-SOLIS, and then Dr. Robbins helped secure a PD from John Crocker, who is the Director of the Massachusetts School Mental Health Consortium, which was really helpful for our staff. Things that we hope to look forward to in the coming year, again, I think it's just always going to be our goal to increase our student knowledge on post-secondary options available to them. And again, to be continued, to be educated on local mental health resources for our students. And then the last bullet is something new that I want to work on, is to promote summer enrichment options for students. There's a lot of colleges that offer things over the summer that we will email out to our students, but I feel like, again, they don't check their email, so if we can just consolidate all that information for our students so that they can do some things over the summer, that could hopefully bump their resume up, I think that would be a great thing, so. Vision of the graduate, I feel like our department focuses on all domains, but I just pulled out these two, just because I feel like it's something that we work on daily with our conversations with our students. Just to give an example, successfully navigate social situations, where we're involved in facilitating mediations between students, so we can help them navigate, you know, difficult conversations with their peers. And then using technology to enhance learning, the Naviance program is a great tool in terms of, you know, finding self, self-discovery tools. We just did a career interest inventory with our sophomores, so they were able to answer a bunch of different questions, it produced a list of careers for them, and then they were able to kind of connect careers to different majors, different schools. So it was really cool for them to use. Prioritizing and managing time effectively, we always meet with students about this, especially for students who have had long extended absences. Creating a plan for them when they return to school, how to manage their schoolwork, how to have those conversations with teachers, just time management in general. And then taking intellectual risks, a lot of these conversations happen over course selection. So when we're meeting with students, you know, looking at their grades, maybe recommending they bump up a higher course if, if they're feeling like they're, they're ready, looking at their teacher's course recommendations. So that is something that we have conversations about on a daily basis. Do that very fast, so, if anybody had any questions.
Any questions?
Just a couple. Credit for life, is that the math department, and does it still happen?
It is. The health department, Ms. Daisy, is the one that runs it.
Okay.
I'm not sure if she's doing it with a co-teacher in the math department, but yes, it is still happening.
Okay. So kind of credit for life for me with the financial literacy and thinking ahead for the kids, and then for me, that goes hand in hand with career fairs. And I was wondering, so I was part of a career fair at the school that I teach at, and students signed up for after-school sessions. There are about, I don't know, 25 to 30 professionals in the community that came in and ran workshops for the kids.
Yeah.
They went and they met with all of us. We did maybe four 30-minute sessions. Kids signed up for the careers they were interested in, came in, talked to us. Do we do something like that?
We don't, but I'm hoping, you know, with the Mass Hire partnership, we took them for the career conference. We would, we were only able to take 30 students, but unfortunately, only 16 signed up. So like, getting the word out there and making sure that the students are accessing the, those field trips that Mass Hire is offering, I think is our start.
And do something...
We can look into it. I know that there was a Career Day years ago, pre-COVID, Guidance wasn't involved in that, I think it was more the business department, but it's something that we can look into. I've thought about some ideas in terms of having a, because we are a small department, trying to make it a little bit more manageable for us, is maybe having specific career-based speakers come in during Bridge Block, and kids can sign up during that way. So for example, if there's parents in the community that are in the health field that would want to come in and discuss, you know, their education, their daily life activities and their job, stuff like that. And then maybe do a health one, a law enforcement one, a business one, engineering one, just like the, the top careers that we see our students get into. I think that could be a start and an easier route than organizing a Career Day right now, just given the small department, but...
Yeah, no, anything, any information that we can get to our kids. Ideally, I would love to see all of the seniors do like in, in class, in school, half-day thing, maybe where they, so that we, we got all kids to do it, but I know that there are certainly obstacles. And for sure, I know it was easy enough for me to be one of the people who presented because I was in the building and that's my job. It's a lot to ask community members to give up a personal day to come in, much easier for them to come in in the afternoons, so, so many moving pieces, but anything that we can do would be awesome. So thank you.
Can I give a shout-out for the newsletter?
Oh, thank you.
As you said, the kids don't always read their emails, so sometimes it's nice to read what you wrote and say, hey, did you see an email about this? So if people aren't getting the emails as parents of the high, at the high school level, it might be worth checking your constant contact settings to see, because there is a lot of good information in there. Especially as your kids get older and it gets a little scarier, what the next steps are going to be. So thank you for the information.
I appreciate that. I want to credit Danielle Gayler for designing our newsletter, because she was the one that put it together at the beginning, so, thank you.
Also, thank you for the junior information, college information, I think.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Ms. Park, can I just ask you a quick question?
Sure.
On the college information sessions during Bridge Block?
Yes.
Did it, did you see it as a positive for the students that you would, that's, was it worth, I guess I'm asking, was it worth it for the impact that it made on the students?
I think so. I think it definitely, I mean, the schools that we had were schools that were kind of close by, so they could actually go there.
Yeah.
My goal is to see if we can get some schools that are farther away, that students may not actually be able to get to so easily, to hear, you know, what that school has to offer. But we find a lot of times that our students don't go on as many tours as we would want them to, so to bring to the colleges here to talk to our students, I think is, is definitely helpful.
Thank you.
I'll just say, I work for a local college, so if you want to email me, I can maybe...
Oh, great.
They would love to come and...
Amazing. Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, I thought that was like a going thing. I mean, I remember, I think a lot of, a lot of high schools do that, so it's weird to hear that we're just finally doing it. I thought that it would be something, I mean, I only have an 11th grader now anyway, and only one child, so I had no idea in the past, but that, for something like that to continue and get bigger, I would just hope that that happens. And also bringing in unions is probably, you know, some kids don't go to college, so...
Right. We had Southeastern Technical Institute come in to talk about the trades to our students, which was really informative. At that Mass Hire event that we had, the Career Day, there was the Electrical Union, which had some really great information. So yeah, I, I agree. I, we have always brought our students to a college fair in the fall, but we've never had colleges come into the school to speak, so I would love to keep it up.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Park.
Thank you.
Next up, English Language Learners Department update. Mrs. Dupree, am I saying that right? Dupree, okay.
So hello, everyone. My name is Elizabeth Dupree, and I am the Director for Pre-K through 12 for the ELE Department. And today, I'm going to talk about the strengths of our department, as well as our areas of growth. So before I get into our strengths and areas of growth, I wanted to give you a brief overview of our L population in Abington. Currently, Ls make up about 12% of our total student population. And as you can see from our graph, over the last 10 years, our L population has been consistently and rapidly increasing. Former English learners are students who have exited the ESL program but are closely monitored by ESL teachers for four years. So English learners and former English learners combined make up almost 15% of our sto, total student population. We also have a large group of students who are not Ls or former English learners, whose first language is not English. And that makes up almost 18% of our population. As far as languages, our students come from 18 different language groups. Our largest language group is Portuguese. 73% of our Ls speak Portuguese as their first language. We also have a growing Spanish and Haitian Creole speaking population. And then another thing to note is over this past year, we've had over 30% of our English learners be in their first year in US schools. Last year, James presented on our areas of growth, so just an update on that. In order to accommodate all of our growth, we've added staff. So we've added a 1.0 ELE teacher at Beaverbrook, a .4 teacher at Woodsdale, a .6 teacher at Abington Middle School. And that's made a huge difference in our department. We've also purchased the Reach curriculum for Woodsdale School, so now Beaverbrook and Woodsdale have the same curriculum. So there's a continuity between grades K through 4. And also, now that K through 4 has the same curriculum series, we are working towards writing curriculum at the elementary school grade level. And we're making sure that our curriculum is aligned with the 2020 WIDA standards, as well as vertically aligned within our department and laterally aligned within the grade level, so students are learning language skills that will help them in the classroom. So some of our strengths, we have an amazing team of ELE teachers. Our teachers are culturally proficient, and they follow an asset-based approach to language learning. An asset-based approach is the idea that we build off students' strengths rather than focusing on their deficits. So for example, we view our students not as students who are, have a deficit in English, but students who are emerging bilinguals. And they come with linguistical and cultural assets that are strengths that we can build upon. We also offer a lot of student programming. We offer our ELE tutoring, the ELE Summer Program. Last year, we had about 30 students attend that program. And this year, we have a Language Buddies Club at the middle school that pairs newcomers with... with students who are either native speakers or have been here for many years. And then at the high school, there's a Brazilian Students Club that just formed. Our department is also really focusing on family engagement. This past year, our LPAC, we've been meeting about once a month, and we've had up to 40 parents attend our LPAC meetings. We have, and I think here is a picture of one of our LPAC meetings here. So parents are able to come to school, ask questions about, you know, various questions how to check student grades, questions that maybe they're not comfortable to speak in other circumstances. We also offer other events to bring families into the school, such as the ESL Family Breakfast, ESL Family Night. We had a coffee and literacy event. We've had two technology workshops, and these workshops coincided with when grades were released at the elementary school level. So we were able to show parents how to check student grades and also contact the teachers if there was any concerns about their grades. And finally, for the third year in a row, we were able to offer adult ESL classes, and our adult ESL classes were funded through the Abington Cultural Council. This past year, we had 30 parents who consistently came. So moving on to areas of growth, our, we have a huge focus on decreasing the L dropout rates at the high school level, as well as closing the achievement gap for Ls across the district. Some things that we're doing to help combat that are making sure that our support teams are consistently discussing students who are high risk of dropping out. Some of our students who are at high risk of dropping out are students who have interrupted learning, students who come from backgrounds where their families are not financially stable, students who come to United States on their own or with one parent. We've also been working to collaborate more with other departments in order to help different departments support their English learners. And then another focus that we've been working on is helping make sure that our Ls are having access to the interventions available at school. Our second area of growth is allowing for more common planning time between ELE teachers and content area teachers. One challenge has been time. Our ELE teachers in the past had a very full schedule and didn't have time to meet during the common planning time of other teachers. But we're working this year to carve out time, so ELE teachers can work with content area teachers to help with accommodations in the classroom, and also so content area teachers can better inform our ELE teachers what they are teaching in the classroom, so our ELE teachers can focus their attention on skills that will help them access the content in class. Finally, we are also working on having a complete written curriculum for K through 12. And like I said earlier, our focus is making sure that our curriculum is aligned with the WIDA 2020 standards, as well as vertically and laterally aligned. So that concludes my presentation. Does anyone have any questions?
Yes. For the, you know, students maybe who have difficult backgrounds, like you talked about, do you have resources or partnerships, I don't know if it's guidance or community groups within the town churches to help connect them with other services they may need, like food insecurity or housing security, you know, because obviously those play a big part in their success academically. So are those resources available to them?
Yeah, so we make sure that our student support teams, our SST teams, are aware if students do come from really tough backgrounds, and we try to provide supports that we can. We lead families in the direction of where they can maybe find therapy in their native language, and just direct them in where they can find other resources to help them with food, shelter if needed.
Just one question. Do we dedicate PD time for the ELE teachers and classroom teachers to meet? Do the ELE teachers get a chance to give workshops and work on strategies?
So I'd love to do that more. In February, the ELE teachers at the middle school did a little bit of PD during our faculty meeting, where we reviewed a bunch of technology tools that teachers can use. We have a lot of new teachers across the district, and some of our new teachers weren't familiar with some of the tools that we had. And then I, this past PD, we had a speaker come to Beaverbrook, and she was out of district, but she provided really helpful PD for teachers on different tools they can use in their classroom to help support their English learners.
It's just so important, because a lot of the strategies that you use for our ELs are strategies that all classroom kids would benefit from. It's just really good teaching.
Yes.
So I know that PD time is stretched thin, but it's so important to get some consistent time, not just that one day. I don't know what we have for the next year or two, but I would love to see more.
I completely agree.
Hop in there and just say that, yes, we agree, and next year, the main focus of our district-wide PD is going to be exactly what you just said, EL strategies that benefit all students. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Right, my turn. Clearly not here, and it doesn't have to be answered tonight, but do we have access to the statistical data on the percentages of dropout rates on our EL students versus our mainstream or our English, like our English-speaking students, native English speakers? And do we, I'd be curious to see what the statistics look like on how we're approaching that and maybe some of the reasons why, like what is it we're losing these kids, and what else can we find? So do we have that data right now? And if not, can we get it?
Sure.
Do you want to answer?
Well, I was going to say that I don't have the numbers off the top of my head, but L students do drop out at a significantly higher rate than native English speakers. And I don't know if you want to add?
Yeah, just that the data that's available from DESI is a year or so old, right?
So we're keeping our data from DESI right now and not, do we have in-house data, just out of curiosity?
We do. We do. It's easier for us to access what DESI's already pulled together, and then we can compare ourselves to other similar districts in the state.
Sure.
And, but even our internal data, right, is 2022.
I would just, I would be interested to see.
Coming off of COVID, so our dropout rate went up for everyone.
For everyone.
Especially for our EL students. So yes, we can, we can get you that.
Because part of what I am curious, thinking long-term, is if we know that there is already a disparity, and piggybacking on the idea of having this commitment to these strategies for our ELs as well as all learners, will we be able to use this to try and minimize the gap? And are we going to follow along with that data as we do this? And thank you for being able to understand what I'm very inarticulately trying to throw out of my mouth right now.
You did a great job. And I can add to that, that our Student Opportunity Act funding, our SOA funding, a lot of that is based on our English learner population numbers increasing, and part of our proposal from 2020, 2020, how we were going to use that funding was exactly to address the achievement gap and dropout rates. So that's something that we're constantly adjusting and working on and reporting back to DESI, and that report is available online as soon as DESI uploads this one this year.
Clearly, whatever we can do to retain our students, we want to be able to do, but at the same time, having been privileged enough to work with a lot of our students this year, and particularly one EL class in particular that I can think of, these kids are list-takers. They are fearless, they are fabulous, and that speaks volumes not just to them and their families, but also to the professionals working with them, that they are just in it full-on to learn and to just try it all. So there are things that are going really, really well, and I'd just love it if on the opposite end of that, we can try and bring that energy up to our oldest students as well, so that lifelong learning becomes their target as well. So, thanks.
Yes, I love that.
During the pandemic, I think it's commonly held that, you know, there was a disproportionate amount of difficulties depending on different population groups, what population group you were in. So our, our students who are English learners, you know, there was, there were travel difficulties during that time, there were also difficulties finding work during that time during families, and so there was a, there was a jump in the dropout rate during COVID, we know that. And the reason we compare ourselves to Massachusetts for that is just, and I've said this before, we want to do better than everybody else, and we use that Massachusetts information just to help us benchmark, because all things being equal, all communities face the same struggles as Abington did. We weren't the only ones who had to, you know, shoulder the pandemic. So you will see a jump during COVID. And as Chris said, our numbers are dated, we've got to, you know, we've got to continue to update them and track it, but those are the populations that the SIR money and the Student Opportunity Act money are for. And you know, because you've been here through all this, that's where we've been putting a lot of emphasis in terms of the appropriate use of those dollars, so.
I just wanted to add, I more call some things that I noticed in there, and great job, by the way. But like looking at, looking at that graph even from the beginning, we've had probably more than a 500% increase in English language learners in less than 10 years, if it's 2014 to now. I think you know, I think most people know, we've done our best to, in our budgeting, to give as much staffing as possible. We have two added right here. It's probably clearly not enough, there can always be more. I mean, I think we know that. But I do just want to, some of the programs, I more just want to give you kudos, honestly. So the Language Buddies Club, I love that idea. I think could be used in other areas. Dr. Robbins potentially Special Ed Buddies Club. And the active engagement, I've been to some CPAC meetings before, so I just want to say 40 parents attending the LPAC meetings, that's incredible. And I know some of the nights we've left here, the ESL, the adult ESL classes have actually been going on. I think that's an unbelievable thing you're doing for the families, and I know the grant is helping provide that, but I think it's unbelievable that we're trying to do the best we can for those that need it, for those that need the supports the most. So that was all I wanted to add.
Thank you. Supporting our families, I'm definitely supporting our students.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Up next, Mr. Baikowski. Report, the Director of Technology. It's going to be so ironic if yours doesn't want to go wrong.
All right, thanks, thanks to the committee to give me a little bit of time to talk about the Abington Public Schools Technology Department. I just wanted to outline to start, the Technology Department in Abington has four members, myself, Oliver Quichello, and Reese Papino are our computer and network technicians. Their positions involve a lot of the day-to-day fixing of student computers and, you know, going into classrooms and sorting out projector issues, repairing screens, anything that might come up on a daily basis, the things that they generally take care of. And then Vicki Graham is our Technology Integration Specialist. Her role is to get into classrooms, to model best practices with teachers. She creates a ton of documentation for our staff to review back on for any particular initiatives that we might be taking on, like maybe Canvas or Clever, so that people can go back and look at that documentation after the fact, you know, if she provides them a training, then they can reflect them on things that they.
For example, I think she was instrumental in those English learner classes in the evenings, teaching people how to access grades and things like that.
Thank you, Peter, that's a good combination. The IT Department helping the EL Department, I love that. There's some statistics I'm just throwing out. You know, there are four people that work in our department, and we manage over 2,000, you know, devices, laptops, desktops. We have projectors. We basically, you know, the joke is, we're in charge of everything that plugs in, right? So if it connects to the network, that's something that we're responsible for. So, you know, all the day-to-day operations, you know, importing attendance into Aspen, we need to make sure that that stuff is working, the kids using their laptop devices in class, the kids using their laptops at home, like all those are things that we are responsible for supporting. My goal sort of in the Technology Department, though, is to just sort of make the technology get out of the way. Like in a perfect world, nobody even knows we're there, because everything's working perfectly. So that's our goal. It's impossible to be that way all the time, but if someone can come in to school, open up their computer and get to work and not have to worry about anything stopping them, then that's why we're here. Not only, as I mentioned, do we do that hardware, software-type support, having Vicki in our department is huge, because she's the person who teaches everyone how to use this stuff. So it's, you know, part of that, I'm involved in that a little bit, but that is her focus. So it's not just, here's the device, figure it out. You know, we have someone in our department who's also available to help them figure it out without having to do it on their own. So on a day-to-day basis, we in the department receive tickets from our customers, right? Our customers being the teachers in the district, the students in the district, and families. Anyone can open a ticket with us, and that's how we know that there's a problem. Somebody may open up a ticket because their laptop screen's broken, or someone may open up a ticket because their projector's not displaying, or the toner in a printer is out. So we get any range of things, and so that's how we, on a day-to-day basis, figure out the things that we need to do to support folks in the district. So just a couple of statistics, last school year, we closed 4,157 tickets over the course of the school year from August 15th until the end. And then this year, the estimate from the numbers that we have so far is we'll get to 3,941. That's a little bit of a decrease, which is great, makes, means our job is so much easier. But reasons that that might happen, because that's usually not the trend since the time that I've been at Abington, the trend has been the amount of tickets have gone up and up as we've added more technology. But two of the things that I wanted to point out was the help from the staff in the library. Tricia London, Sheila Manzi, and this year Caroline Ellis has been doing her student teaching in the library and helping as well. If you're not aware, when a student has an issue with their device in the high school or the middle school, if they can't resolve it in the classroom with the teacher, they bring the device to the library. And in the library, they do an initial triage of what the problem might be, and sometimes they help them, and the student can go right back to class. And if they can't help them, what they do is provide them with a loner, and then that device comes to our department, so we can resolve the problem. I looked this morning around nine o'clock, and the library staff had seen, had had 1,042 specific events of a kid coming in looking for help. So that's between, you know, that's in the start of the year until this morning at nine. So it could be an issue simply that they need to restart the computer, and the librarians may help them with that. It could be an issue where they lost a file, and they may sort that out. And so some of those issues don't make it all the way to us, and that's a huge help, obviously. Without them, I don't, you know, we'd have far more tickets, and I'm not sure we'd be able to provide the support around the district that we're able to. The other thing that we added this school year that's new is if a student does damage their device, whether it's an accident or maybe it's not so much of an accident, we do send a letter home to parents now to let them know. What we found in the past, we've had a one-to-one, and kids have been receiving computers for, I think it's six or seven years now. So we're adjusting things as we go. What we started to see last year a little bit more than we liked was sort of a repeat customer issue, where someone might have a broken screen, and then a month later, they're coming back with a whole bunch of missing keys. And so we thought it would be best to maybe involve the families as well, just to let them know what is happening. In the past, we'd fix the issue, and the kid would get the computer back, and who knows what would happen between then. So we've added that. I don't have any statistics that say that that's helped, but it is a difference between last year and this year, so it may have had an impact on maybe some of that repeat customer business that we were having before. Okay, a few projects that we have worked on this past year through funding, well, this is an ongoing one, but through funding that's been approved at town meeting for the past couple of years, we receive money to purchase new laptop devices for our fifth graders and our ninth graders. So all of our fifth graders to ninth graders get a computer that they can take home with a bag and with earbuds, and so now with that funding, it becomes a sustainable situation. You don't have a computer for eight years, you have it for four years, which is a reasonable amount of time, I think, for our students. So when the kids come to fifth grade, the first day of school, those devices are waiting in their classroom for them. The kids keep them for the four years, they take them home for the summer, they take them home every night. And then when they get to ninth grade, I've been working with the administration in the high school, and this year what we did was the day after Labor Day, the freshmen got their computer, because they, they will have had their computer from eighth grade over the summer coming into ninth grade, and so they received theirs very quickly at the beginning of the year, but it's easier than the first day, because they have to give the other one back. it's easier than the first day, because they have to give the other one back. We are working on replacing staff laptops. We are doing that in mass, like we do with the students, but with some school funding, we're dealing with that. This year, we opened up the Aspen Parent Portal. In the past, families would have to log in to Aspen as their students, to find their student information, which they could do when the information is there, but if you happen to have six children, that's sort of inconvenient, because you'd have to log in and then log out, and log in and log out, right? So now, families can log in with one account and see all their students in one place, K through 12, which is obviously a much easier user experience. And one thing that I'm excited about for this summer is an update to our emergency calling system. I'm sure everyone's familiar with hearing Peter say there's a snow day, no snow days is here. But that system has got a major update, and some of the benefits of that are the ability to use that same system to send phone calls, emails, and text messages to. I know that a lot of people prefer text messages, maybe you don't want to get woken up by Peter at five in the morning, I don't know why you wouldn't, but now there'll be other options. And there's translation built into those things, so, you know, we can reach the folks who may not understand what Peter's saying, because English is not their first language, using that, you know, one single system. So, other things that the IT Department is responsible for, cybersecurity. Not everyone's favorite topic, but the district applied for a cybersecurity grant with the state, and that grant, we were awarded that grant amongst other school districts and towns in Massachusetts. And that grant provides our staff with online training on cybersecurity. So they can learn about recognizing phishing attempts, they can understand why you shouldn't let people come in the building behind you, things like that. So we can get a better baseline cybersecurity posture for everybody. It's important that everybody can recognize those things. There are other school districts around us that have had issues with being hacked, and it often comes in through an email that seems innocuous and has some sort of link on it that someone might click on. So, the more training we can do with that, the better. The Technology Department is responsible for making sure all devices are patched, and that we have the most security that we possibly can. This past year, we implemented a new web filtering system, it's called LineWise. It's on most of our computers, all of our student computers, and then other computers that are shared. And what that does is it filters the internet, as we're supposed to for the federal government, but it also provides an extra layer of protection in the sense that it blocks computers from getting to malicious websites that maybe they mistakenly might get to otherwise. We are moving all of our devices into Microsoft Azure Cloud. We use Microsoft devices here in Abington, and that cloud gives the IT Department better visibility into the devices, no matter where they are. I wish this had been done before COVID, because obviously everyone was just at home at that point. But now, you know, knock on wood, that never happens again. But this does give us the ability to know, oh, there's a computer that's at someone's house that has an infection. And we can kind of remediate that before it gets back to school, which is a huge help. And this year, we added a process of physically removing backups from the school. We have a number of backups, we have backups in the cloud, we have backups in the server room here in the building, but we also now take our backups off-site. So, in the event that something catastrophic, like a fire in the server room, again, hopefully never, something like that would happen, but if it did, our critical systems are backed up off-site, and we can recover from something like that, if it did happen. Physical security, which has been a kind of a theme tonight, so we've worked, we work with the maintenance department a lot on this, and with town funding that we received in 2021, that's when we extended our camera and electronic locking systems outside of this building to the other two buildings, the elementary schools. So we added a number of cameras at both Beaverbrook and Woodsdale, we added electronic locks. Those locks, the electronic locks give you opportunities to know who's coming and going, and you don't have to give out keys. If a key gets lost, then you have to rekey like an entire building, right? Well, with a fob, you can turn those on and off as people come and go, or if someone loses it, it's much easier to manage than a key, handing out keys daily. And this past year, this year, excuse me, we applied for another grant with the state in order to add additional cameras to both of those schools. So we, I think we did a good job with the monies that we had of coverage, but you can always add more. So we applied to see if we can get some more money to add additional cams. And the reason that we all come to school, curriculum instruction and special education, we work with those departments as well. There's a couple of examples here, worked with Dr. Robbins, worked with Dr. Basta. You know, we, it's not necessarily our day-to-day responsibility, but one of the things that I do think is important is that we can use technology to make sure that education is accessible for all of our students, you know, whatever their supports might be, whether it's, you know, needing something, needing their device to read aloud, or having their device in a different language, you know, technology can help bridge that gap. And so we want to be a part of that, and I think, you know, we work with those other departments to make sure that that's the thing. We look out and, you know, we try and find new products that may be helpful, you know, for the Special Ed Department, and, you know, we can run it by them. But we're not the subject matter experts necessarily, although Vicki is a teacher, so she does have that experience. But, you know, our technology side of things, I think, meshes well with the other departments in the district, so that we can help build that technology competency and make sure that our students are supported in that way. Matt, here's my last slide.
Just to give you an example of something I've seen over the last couple of years, I think it was years ago, Vicki was showing a kindergarten teacher how to make a mouse move through a maze, and the students manipulate the mouse by pressing certain buttons to make the mouse go right or left, or get to, you know, a goal, a piece of cheese or something. And that is the precursor for computer programming. Those are the fundamental skills that a computer programmer uses. And I was in a kindergarten classroom a couple weeks ago, and there were students working in a group, programming this little plastic toy mouse to go through a maze. And that's, you know, again, it's amazing to see kindergartners, that it's, that it's become that, a part of the fabric, a part of the life, a part of the daily activities of children that are in the public schools. You say, take out the laptops and get onto this website, and it's a, you know, third-grade room, and they're up and they're on the website in less than a minute. Whereas five, six years ago, that would have, all chaos would have broken out, there'd be one person running around the room, saying, okay, enter here, no, enter there. And so it's really impressive to see the whole technology operation.
Quick question. When teachers or admin are having a technology crisis, there's no one more important in the district than you and your team. Are you all housed in the same building? And if you are, who do we have at each school?
We, our office is in this building. It's in the back of the building, it's sort of hidden, not necessarily reveal our location, but, yeah, we're at this building, but Abington's pretty small, so, you know, we can, obviously, we're not as fast as the police, but we can get to, get to where we need to be fairly quickly.
It's like, if I'm having a crisis in my classroom, and I really, really, really need to do my lesson, and I need you somewhere else.
It's very rare that you don't get the help that you need.
Okay, good.
I just wanted to say, I appreciate that you guys are now giving laptops, you know, in the elementary school, and then when they transition to the high school, because that's huge. That didn't happen before, so.
I guess I didn't mention either, you know, something else that, because once we get computers back from seniors and from eighth graders, becoming ninth graders, we can filter those down to the elementary schools as well. So at Woodsdale, every classroom has a computer for the kid, like there's a card at 30 in there, so there's actually enough for the kid plus extras. So all the way from really third grade up to 12, if the kids have a device, that's sort of designed to that. They just don't go home.
Perfect. And I just wanted to ask you, you had said that you, like, a flag would come up basically if a student was at home, you know, using the ESER for Microsoft?
Yeah, that's mostly based on if they had some sort of malicious software on their computer. We would, we can, we can tell that before maybe they bring it into school and infect someone.
So, can you tell, like, what websites they're using and everything too, or just?
We can tell what websites they're using with the other product that I mentioned, like LineWise product that does the web filtering, we can tell what websites it was using there, because we have to block certain categories per the government, like pornography, for example, so that system does track what they're doing.
And do you guys keep, like, a data list of what kids are?
There's a list in that system. I don't review it. It is, it has been provided to the middle school and high school office, so in the event that they have an issue, they could go in and review it. It's not something that's regulated, but it is definitely stored in students' web behavior.
Awesome, thank you. And do you have a written information security plan?
We do not.
Okay.
It needs to, it needs to be created, but it is not.
Okay. So, is it, are you supposed to have one, though?
There's no rule that says you need to have one. There's a number of them we should have, we should have an incident response, like if something went crazy, we should have an information security one based on maybe privacy. So there's a number of policies that we should have, but there's no requirement that anyone in the school has, and it would just be something that would be beneficial for us. So, it's something that I have in my head, but it's often just trying to find time to do.
Right. And if you do do it, I would just recommend, like, all the teachers and staff getting a copy and signing off on it, that they've read it. And if you need any help with that, I could send you some of them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Rich, I just want, like, you've mentioned it too, but I just want to reiterate regarding the town, the town meeting and the funding, like, thank you to the town, because obviously without, technology isn't going anywhere, right? It's not gonna get less technologically advanced as we move along, so we do need to replace these laptops, and the money that they provide is in the budget, helps us to continue to do that. You mentioned the EEP and the work being done in there. I just want, like, I went, about a month ago, I was in one of the Special Ed classrooms there, and it was incredible, the use they were able to get out of using the touchscreen for some of the kids that are non-verbal, and being able to work with them. I just, I hadn't seen it in action before, so it was great to see, and now I know how it was being put about, so thanks, and.
There's a big shout-out to Vicki on that one, too. She spent a lot of time in those classrooms. And I remember the first day she came back to the office and said, I went into the room and they were doing it without me.
I think she was actually there.
No, I just want to say thank you. You guys have been awesome over the years, and anytime that I've had an issue or know anyone that experienced one, you guys are right on it. So, thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rich. Thanks.
Thank you, everyone.
Up next is the Woodsdale School Improvement Plan, Ms. Varesi.
Rich left, so hopefully.
Yeah, hopefully.
Vicki said.
Good evening. I'm Jen Varesi, the Prac Principal of the Woodsdale School, and I'm excited to be here tonight to share Woodsdale's School Improvement Plan. I was trying to think of a little clever way to connect with you to begin, and I was thinking of a funny anecdote, because something hilarious happens every day at Woodsdale. And I was, I did come up with something. Yesterday, Steven is a little third grader at Woodsdale, and on my first day there, he approached me at arrival, like he was the mayor, reached out his hand and said, hi, my name is Steven, Ms. Varesi, Steven with a P-H. So I, like, immediately knew him, and so yesterday, Steven with a P-H missed the bus. And so we were in the main office, hanging out together, waiting for his mom to come and pick him up. And so I was just, you know, chatting with him, getting the lowdown on his little sister, and we were just, you know, having a little conversation. And so the main office is usually bustling at dismissal, and then, you know, Steven's mom was about 20 minutes out. So after about 10 minutes in, the main office is getting quieter and quieter and quieter. So he looks at me and he says, so, Ms. V, what are you, what are you doing while the kids leave? And I said, well, I work. And he said, oh, and so then he waited, and you could see the, like, a little, like, thought flicker across his face, and he said, oh, so you, so that's what you do when all the kids leave, you just, you work? And I said, yes. And he said, well, no, duh, you're the principal, of course you work. And I said, yes, exactly. And so, I'm thinking, as the principal of Woodsdale, I am so incredibly blessed to be in this community of learners, surrounded by sweet, sweet, smart kids and families, and my staff is just outstanding. They stretch and push themselves each and every day to reach all the needs of all the kids. And I would be remiss without, you know, acknowledging them tonight. And I also wanted to thank the brains behind the School Improvement Plan, which is my incredible School Improvement Council, Chris Coyle, Shawna Torpey, and Vicki Graham, our parent representatives, and then our teacher representatives, Megan Eddy and Andrea Doian. And so, to get started this evening, I wanted to go over some highlights of some wins that we've experienced through this year's School Improvement Plan. So, all of our goals from this year's plan and in next year's plan, the underpinnings are to ensure that our kids at Woodsdale are happy, safe in learning. And so when we're looking at goal number one, which is grounded in teaching and learning, one of the highlights this year is that we successfully implemented Reading Workshop as our tier-one core curriculum focus for ELA. Staff received consistent, in-depth, monthly training and coaching sessions from Jen Jaeger, who's our consultant from the Teaching and Learning Alliance. You would be amazed at what our kids are doing each and every day as they are reading and responding to complex texts. It's like Harvard. And then, Chris, today, Nora was part of some historical book clubs in her third-grade four classroom, and they were examining elements of setting and how that sets the stage for a deeper book discussion. And then Rowan, Shawna, in grade three, was doing some research on sharks. So the kids are just really doing some amazing in-depth work as a result of Reading Workshop, and I'm really proud of them. Within our second goal, with increasing community connections, it was super important this year, in my first year as principal, to make sure that I was connecting with our community at large. So we've had some really great events at Woodsdale, including open house, parent conferences, Curriculum Night, and our grade-three team hosted an MCAT information night. So those were some great opportunities to connect with students and their families. And then, oops, so sorry, our third goal, with providing a healthy and safe learning environment, social-emotional learning is at the heart of everything that we do at Woodsdale. So we've expanded our offerings to include monthly school meetings with individual grade levels, and kids are exposed to daily morning meetings in their classrooms, and they have access to weekly snack groups and lunch-bunch. So moving into this year's School Improvement Plan, again, our three goals are connected to the District Strategic Plan, and they are grounded in teaching and learning, safety, and social-emotional learning. Some highlights of some of the activities that we're going to be doing next, doing next year, within each of our goals. Goal number one next year, within teaching and learning, since this year's focus was Reading Workshop, we want to make sure that next year, we're moving into the science of reading, and we want to make sure that we're giving students an opportunity to strengthen their decoding skills. So we're going to do a deep dive into phonics and spelling, and we just wrapped up a phonics committee group led by Dr. Basta. I'm pretty certain that we're going to be moving into adopted foundations. So that will give teachers an opportunity to teach critical foundational skills, to help kids lip the print during reading. I think, just like we did this year, it's going to be real important next year for teachers to have explicit training and coaching, to make sure that they're. to make sure that they're understanding how to teach these foundational reading skills to kids. A highlight for our second school improvement goal with keeping our kids safe. We're partnering, we're partnering with our district-wide safety team, of which Shawna was talking about earlier. And one of the ways that we're ensuring that Woodsdale is a safe place to learn is by experimenting with some volunteer greeters who are present at the front entrance of the building. And their role is to help reduce the number of people who are in the building and to ensure that all visitors check in at the main office. And then within goal number three, this is my favorite. To ensure that, you know, kids are happy at Woodsdale, we have a huge core value program happening that extends the work that Mr. Haas started last year. But in order to promote a positive culture and climate at Woodsdale School, we have the Owl Awards. So we host monthly grade level meetings to identify and embody the core traits of an outstanding owl. Since we're at the Woodsdale School, the owl is our little mascot. So for example, this month, we are studying cooperation. So we launch at the beginning of the month, our core value focus in a team meeting. We might watch video, we might read a story, but we discuss what the trait is and what it looks like in practice. And then when kids go back to their classrooms, the teachers are on the lookout for ways that the children can demonstrate these traits on a daily basis. And when the students are using the traits, so for example, if a student is using cooperation, the teacher will acknowledge the student and then the student will come down to the office in the morning after morning announcements and they get an owl sticker. It is my favorite time of day. The line is out the door and around the corner with kids coming down earning. When they receive five stickers, they are in the nest. So we have a gigantic bulletin board in the cafeteria for all to see. And then they get an owl, the owl goes in the nest, they get a certificate, they go on the Facebook page. So they're acknowledged on social media. Then they keep earning and then once they earn, so it goes in like increments of fact. So once they earn 10 stickers, then they go, then they become an outstanding owl. They fly out of the nest into the outstanding owl tree. And then they start to earn prizes for every five stickers that they earn. And then the student with the most stickers at the end of the year will be the outstanding owl for grade three and grade four. And they'll have a little acknowledgement for them at our last all-school meeting in June. So those are just some highlights of each of our goals and some of the activities and indicators of accomplishment that we're going to put into practice next year. Does anybody have any questions?
Jen, I have one.
Sure.
First of, well, I guess first of all, though, I'm going to offend some people probably with this one a little bit, but I love Woodsdale School. This is my fourth year there. It'll be my last year having a student there. But I love going into that school, so I just want, and exactly what you said about the teachers, I 100% agree with. So the kids in there right now, they were really impacted their whole Beaverbrook career, let's call it that, by COVID.
Yeah.
What are you seeing as you work? What is your staff seeing as it works with them? Where do you think they were hit the most? And maybe it's the work on the phonics and the spelling and the reading, and that's where it needs to focus on. But is that what you're seeing where that grade level, that group of kids were impacted the most by COVID? Because they pretty much, I know the fourth graders, it happened in first.
Yeah.
Second was, was a cohort year. The third grades, it happened in kindergarten. First was a cohort year, second started off weird. So they kind of lost most of their Beaverbrook careers where it started. So I guess what, what, what difficulties did, maybe in a normal situation wouldn't have occurred that you're seeing now in addressing them?
I, I think that's an excellent question. I think it's a little bit of everything. I mean, I think, I do think academically, yes, I think that phonics is an area of need and that's why we're addressing it. I also think social emotional learning is a need. I don't think that that was because of COVID. I think COVID like shined, shone a spotlight on what had already been existing. But I do, I definitely think social emotional learning is a huge area of need that we're seeing. And that's why we're trying to get a 9.5 School Adjustment Counselor. And just making sure that we're well-staffed and that we have things in place to, to help kids and their families.
Okay. Thank you.
My question, Vicky backs on that. I think across the board, I've been, keep checking in on behavior. And I'm just wondering what the informal chatter is. I know it's been not the best over the past couple of years. And I'm just wondering, are we seeing it get a little better, a little worse at Woodsdale? And are we offering the teachers enough support for any behavior issues in the classroom?
Can you tell me a little bit more, Danielle? Can you give me an example so that I can best answer you?
Yeah, I guess just when we talk about the, the emotional, the social emotional learning, the, the personal accountability piece of students behaving appropriately in the classroom. And if they're not, and they're disrupting the learning of all the other students, are we seeing that get a little bit less? Are the incidents, I know it was in the initial year or two back, that the chatter, the informal chatter, was that overall in classrooms everywhere?
Yeah.
It was a big issue. And I'm just wondering, are you hearing that at the Woodsdale? Is, are there any behavior, overall big behavior issues? Or does it seem to be overall under control? And if there are kids that are having those moments where they may need to take a quick timeout so that everybody can move on, are the teachers getting the support that they need?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank, yeah, thank you. That makes, I just needed like a little bit of context. So I think, I think that you're always going to see kids have needs.
Sorry, are there consequence? It's hard at that level, but the consequences for student behavior, different from a middle and high school perspective. But who handles that? And, and does everybody feel supported? I figured it was you. I just wanted to check in on that.
Yeah. I think, you know, I think that we're always going to, we're always going to see, you know, we're in a public schoolhouse, right? So we're always going to see kids have struggles. I think it's important to have a core value program, for lack of a better word, or like a study at the core so that we're giving kids tools so that they can be a really good citizen and they can be their best selves. I do have a positive approach to disciplining kids. It's very problem-solving oriented. And I think at Woodsdale, we do work as a team. So the teachers aren't feeling alone and they feel like that they have a team of supports to help them. So we work closely, myself with our school psychologist, with our school behaviorist. You know, we, we work as one. And so we're constantly meeting as a team on a weekly basis, connecting with teachers all the time to help them problem solve. So I would want the teachers to feel like they're not alone and to feel like they have, you know, a big team to help them. So I would, I hope that they feel supported. And students, I mean, I try, I try to, if there are consequences, I make sure that they are natural in that they mirror, you know, where like the event happens. So if something happens, you know, at lunch, they might have a little reflection, have a little reflection lunch with me. If something happens at recess, maybe they miss five minutes of recess and we reflect. But the, we always come back to like, how can you be your best self? How can you learn from this mistake? Because kids are going to make mistakes and we want them to own what they do and to, to learn from it.
Ask it through me.
Okay.
So basically consistent powers, like so it's a something, somebody that the student may recognize throughout the day kind of thing? Like a norm, like a? Okay. No, no, I'm going to, I'm going to let you answer in a second. I'm going to guess that it might be, I don't know if we have powers. Aside from, I mean, there are children that have one-to-one powers that are assigned for certain instances like that. But Ms. Baresi, you can answer, or Peter even throughout the district. I don't know if there's specific powers that would be designated just for situations like that, right?
No, not, not to handle discipline or behavioral management. I'll let you talk about how you create a team with the paraprofessionals. We've got a lot of support in classrooms, but you can always have more of it. Do you want to explain how that team works when a student has a meltdown?
Yep, if a student has, if, if there is a student in need, the teacher will call the office. And then myself, the behaviorist, or the school psychologist will help to support the student. So if I'm not available, you know, it's almost like we're, we're one person. So if I'm not available, the school psychologist will jump in. Or if she's not available, I'll jump in. Or if the behaviorist is not at Woodsdale, you know, so we all just, we all work together. Sure.
Thank you. I don't know.
All right. Two points. Three, really, hi, thank you for being here. Wow, late. So number two, goal one, number two, the phonics and the spelling program. Thank you for, for seeing the need, for understanding. Very direct, explicit instruction, particularly in the area of phonics and reading. It's so very necessary if we are going to create lifelong readers, learners. You can hear about a reading and throw out the best theories out there, but it's not going to help you if you cannot read the job application you're trying to fill out. And so it sounds interesting to people to hear, all right, we're bringing phonics into third and fourth grade. It's always good to have and build and rebuild and hone those foundations. So I'm super glad to see that business is coming back. And I'm very excited to hear what the teachers have to say as a result of having. Something that I think a lot of them have been looking forward to having back in rotation. So that's something I'm excited about. As far as the safety improvement, number two. And this goes back to the first discussion we had and I think to the discussion we're going to have on safety. And this is essentially to everyone in the room. Number one, the first word written there is partner. And I remember a time and a space and a place where one of the schools, their response to kind of what was happening in the world around us was basically to say, "We don't want any volunteers in our school. Thanks for coming." And as a parent, that just about crushed me because that partnership was what I needed. It's what I wanted, it's what I craved. I was, you know, and it, there were, it was the most isolating feeling. And to the group that sits here right now, one of the things I admire is there is a concern and a group came together and had ideas, had thoughts, had discussions. And I'm using that in the past tense and I know it's not a past tense thing. So it's always important to have these discussions ongoing. But to know that the school and this committee and the parents are coming together to discuss things. And even as it's being discussed in the community, that is a sign of kind of a healthier community in my view. Because when we're talking about it, we're acknowledging it, we're coming up with more creative ways because we don't want to ever be complacent and be the not-in-my-backyard people. So the fact that you are talking about allowing volunteers to kind of have a say and to think a little bit more about how we can do this creatively. You know, we are here to keep our kids safe. We're here to help our children learn. And to me, this is a fabulous goal and I'm glad it's there. And thank you to everyone who is working calmly, creatively, and kindly together to kind of affect and change.
Thank you, Abby. Ms. Baresi, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks.
Dr. Michella, Assistant Superintendent of Schools on a School Safety Update.
Thank you. I believe on the counter next to the camera is a copy of, not the PowerPoint, but the items in the PowerPoint. If people are interested, you can have one of those. Otherwise, I'm going to talk through some of the safety and security items, experiences that we have, things that we do. We've talked a lot already tonight around our SROs and the role of our SROs and the training that goes into our SROs. And I think as has been said already, but it's important to reiterate that we are always looking for ways to improve the safety in our schools. Our schools aren't safe enough. And, and having that idea that our schools aren't safe enough is what is going to keep us striving to have our schools safer. So we are always looking for ways to improve. We're always looking for ways to increase our security. However, tonight I would like to provide you with a number of items that we are doing today in our schools and that are ongoing. So thank you, Dr. Basta. The first one we've talked about already is that the Abington Police Department has assigned two police officers to the role of SRO. As the chief indicated earlier, he plans to have additional officers undergo that same training to become SROs. And, and he also spoke about the ongoing training that the SROs engage in, both in school, SRO training and school policing and mental health and trauma. So thank you for that. In collaboration with the police department, in our SROs, we conduct training, safety training and drills throughout the school year. You probably, I hope had heard that the Friday before April vacation, all of our schools participated in some type of Alice or evacuation drill. And depending on the school, was different scenarios that were practiced on that Friday. I also think that it is really important to talk about, after each of those events, the time that we spend debriefing, the time that we spend administrators with staff, administrators in the police department, those of us that were observing, to, to talk about what we could do differently and what we should do differently. And, and that absolutely happened on that Friday afternoon. And actually will continue tomorrow. We have an administrative team meeting and that's one of the agenda items on there, are there. You know, every time you do a drill, you learn something. So that's been very positive and it's very helpful. Every single staff member in the Abington Public Schools, whether you are a permanent employee, you're a substitute teacher, you undergo Alice, you, you watch an Alice video, an Alice training video. So everyone speaks the same language, everyone understands what Alice is. And so we are thankful that every single employee, as part of their onboarding, is to, to, to take part in Alice online training. There's also training that is put on through Alice, the company. That's online training that staff participate in yearly as well. Rich talked about our camera system. We have cameras, both interior and exterior in all of our buildings. Like to thank Town Meeting, as was talked about earlier, for funding, additional, funding cameras at Woodsdale, Beaverbrook, and also Key Fob entrance at Beaverbrook and Woodsdale. All of those cameras can be viewed in that, in the school specific and also at the police department. In the dispatch area, the police department streams all of our exterior cam, exterior and interior cameras into the dispatch area. So if something were to happen, that can be another point in which they can see what's happening in all of our buildings. The school department, unfortunately, as you know, you've probably, I'm sure, seen the emails, that we've had numerous threats to student and school safety over the last couple of years. I think we can say we've seen an increase in that. And through our collaboration with the police department and our school resource officers, we have a very established protocol on what happens should our school, should we hear about a threat, either to our school or students or faculty within our school. And that protocol is followed every single time. And you have seen emails that say, this morning, we found out. And you're not getting the email till five o'clock, and that's because it took all day for both the school. It may have taken, if you got the email at five o'clock, it's because it took the whole day for the school and the police department to go through that protocol. So that's something that, to say we're proud of seems a little, not the right word. But we are proud of where, of the protocol that we've established with the police department and are very thankful for our relationship with the SROs and the Abington Police Department for that. Rich talked about faculty and staff are provided with limited access key fobs. So you have a key fob that gets you into the building to which you're assigned, not necessarily all the buildings. And it's also timed. So you, different people have different access. If you're a staff member, then you have Monday through Friday access. You wouldn't have Saturday and Sunday access. So that's also helpful that we, and it's recorded. We know who's coming in the building and at what time, who's leaving at what time, if we needed to find out that information. And if a faculty or staff member leaves, then their fob, if they don't turn their fob in, which they're supposed to, it can get shut off, which is also helpful. Throughout every day, our, we've asked our staff to be, faculty and staff to be aware of checking doors as they go by them. And also have asked our custodians to deliberately check doors multiple times during the day. I also know, it's even hard for me going into a building, not holding the door open for the person walking behind me. It's really important that if you're at a building and you're buzzed in, to, what's it called? Tailgating? To not let someone tailgate in with you, it feels awkward. But it's important, we have signage, I was just at the Woodsdale School today, and they have nice signage on the front door, that if only those people who have identified themselves to the office should be coming in the door. Sorry, I'm really sorry you have to wait, but until you identify yourself, so they know that you're waiting, that they're waiting for you to come into the office also. So we ask visitors to please come in one at a time. And again, I know it's awkward to tell someone who's standing beside you. I'm sorry, you have to buzz, you have to ask for permission or something. Recently, the school department, this has also been mentioned, was awarded a $50,000 grant with Safer Schools and Communities, Local Equipment and Technology Grant. And that's gonna be used to increase camera coverage at the Woodsdale and the Beaverbrook, and also to add key fob entrance. In the last month or so, the Abington Fire Department has provided voluntary Stop the Bleed training for our faculty and staff in each building. So faculty and staff are invited after school, again, volunteering, to participate in Stop the Bleed, which is the use of a tourniquet. And after they completed the tourniquet, they were provided with a tourniquet and with blood clotting gauze. And that's something that they can have in their classroom. Additionally, in all of our AEDs or automated defibrillators, which are placed in each of our buildings, there's also a tourniquet kit within, within those cabinets. So in each cabinet is a defibrillator and also a Stop the Bleed kit. So we're thankful to the fire department for providing that training and anticipate that that'll be something that will be offered again. Won't be a one-time, in the fall, we'll have that training as well. We've talked a bit about mental health and our mental health supports within the Abington Public Schools. Each of our schools has a student support team. Some of them are called different things. But a student support team consists of administrators, counselors, school psychologists, school adjustment counselors, school resource officers, and nurses. And SSTs meet regularly throughout the school year to discuss academic and social-emotional health of particular students. And also, you know, it's a brain trust to talk about the best way to support students and families, and who's gonna reach out to the family, what types of supports can we provide individual families. Again, both academic and social-emotional resources. We also have had a priority around student mental health in our schools. And with that, we've included school adjustment, an increase in school adjustment counselors in our budget. We made it a budget priority, and the school community supported our budget priority of getting the school adjustment counselors that were included in the federal ESAR grant into our operational budget. So that's something that even after the federal grant runs out next year, that'll be something that'll be part of our ongoing operational budget, is to have those school adjustment counselors included in our schools. And we have had great success with our school adjustment counselors. I guess great success is, you know, that's also a weird thing to say. Our students have been, have accessed their services, and we're thankful for that. Students in our elementary and middle school, our elementary and middle school, are taught the Second Step Curriculum that helps students build social-emotional skills and that help them thrive in school and in life. And so we're thankful that we are also providing everyday skills for our students. Signs of Suicide, which is an evidence-based curriculum, is taught to all high school students. So students at Abington High School have toolkit to recognize signs of suicide in school and also instruct, talk to and instructed with who to speak to about that. You know, trusted adults within the school. And lastly, in the fall, we partnered with Be Smart, which was a campaign to promote responsible gun ownership, to reduce gun deaths. And we disseminated information to the Abington community around the Be Smart Responsible Gun Ownership Program. So, last slide is to reiterate that the safety and security of our students and staff is our most important priority. We can never make our schools safe enough, but we can continue to grow and reflect and provide training and reflect on those trainings. So we are, we continue to be better. And lastly, I'd like to again thank the Abington Police Department and the Abington Fire Department for our partnership. And it really is a partnership. And we're very lucky to be in a community that the schools respect the police and the police respect the roles of the police department. I can tell you, just as, you know, I talked about post-Alice drills on Friday and the discussions that we had. And they were, with our SROs, the perspective of the police department and the perspective of the school department. And we had a long discussion in the hallway at the Woodsdale School, and it was great. You know, things that the police department, SROs, hadn't thought about when they're thinking about school safety, necessarily because they're not educators, and things that I hadn't thought about. A different set of eyes from someone who's a police officer. I'm not a police officer. So I'm very thankful for the conversation and the communication and the trust that we have with each other.
Can I ask, the committee chair, the question is, Felicia, thank you for running through that list. But as I mentioned earlier, it's absent what I think a lot of people, you know, want to talk about adding. School resource officer, is it worth asking our chief, who's been kind enough to be here with us tonight and stick through this till nine o'clock with us, to describe again the possibilities for improved coverage with the existing staffing? Is it worth?
Chief, would you mind just a second, just in case it didn't get picked up too the first time? Thank you, I appreciate it.
You know how when your kids are in dance programs, they schedule your kid to perform at the first part of it and the end of it? So you have to stick through everything.
And I just wanna say too, I wanted, Dr. Michelle, thank you for the update. I know I received, I received a bunch of emails about a month ago, asking for school safety to be part of the agenda. So we wanted to provide that, wanted to provide the opportunity for, for parents to come and talk earlier tonight and have open dialogue about, not everything can be solved right now. But I hope we've been able to give you at least that opportunity to have the discussion tonight and continue it into the future anyway, so. God, Chief, thank you so much.
So a couple of those items that I spoke about earlier is, as we onboard more officers out of the police academy and improve our ranks, our goal ultimately is to get the school resource officers back into the schools full-time and not have to pull them away on shift coverage to handle calls for service. Additionally, to improve our visibility and presence at the schools. During those times where our SROs are unavailable, either due to training they have to attend or personal vacations or the like, we're gonna, we anticipate training two officers as backup SROs to fill those gaps. So there aren't any vacancies in coverage at the schools. And then on top of that, we're gonna increase school visits, not just with the SROs, but with the other officers on duty, so they can become more familiar with the layout of the school, with the staff, with the faculty, and with the students.
Thank you very much, Chief. Appreciate your time coming here tonight. Thank you so much.
Of course.
Tony, address it through me.
Yeah, that's okay. I was just wondering if motion detectors are also included in any of this, in terms of like, especially overnight? Overnight surveillance, you know, someone piggyback on an event like this where, you know, and then we in somewhere.
I can do.
We have.
Yeah.
Okay.
I get texts and calls all the time. No, but you're right. Good question, thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Felicia? Alright, thank you, Felicia.
Sure, thank you.
You're up.
Establishment of the final day of school, I'm gonna ask the committee if they would approve Wednesday, June 14, which is a half-day for students, as our last day of school for the school year.
I'll make a motion, thank you, no snow. All in favor?
Aye.
And the school calendar for next year. This calendar that you have includes attending school on Good Friday.
If I may, in case anybody's unaware, the school attendance, having school on Good Friday was obviously a topic of discussion recently. So in the last month, five weeks, I received a few emails, about four to five emails regarding this topic. Two or three of them were indifferent, a couple of them said, indifferent and okay having school that day. Some things that were mentioned were, the reason they were upset about it is because it was never discussed. I think that was sufficiently disputed about the fact that it was never discussed, so I'm not gonna go there again. We had decent attendance, we had really good, we had better than I thought attendance for teachers throughout that day. The students, the younger they were, the more they were in school. So I don't know if the younger students are more religious than the older students are. But at the same time, I think, we don't, we don't, we do have school on the Jewish holidays. This wasn't something I thought I was gonna be, I didn't think it was gonna be something that was gonna work. I think it does, and I think it will, so I'm okay with this calendar as is. If anybody else wants to have any discussion on it, we can feel free to, but I just, with the amount of chatter that was out there four weeks ago, I needed to make that statement.
I just wanna say, I think that one of the things that we missed is that, I think Danielle, you brought it up, which I think is a good idea, but because at the end of the school year, Juneteenth was added. And if we were to have five days, then that would like lead us into having one more additional school day, you know, on a Tuesday, let's say. So I think that's one of the reasons that I was brought up. I mean, I was brought up in a district that had all the Jewish holidays off. It's, we just went to school longer, basically. So I'm not super religious, it doesn't affect me. I didn't hear a lot, or I don't think anybody up here as well. I didn't hear a lot of bad chatter. I just heard like a lot of the high school kids, I think, just wanted to kind of get away with the day if they could. And, because there were no repercussions, basically, we missed a school.
Their parents had to sign off on that?
Yeah.
It's important to note.
So the reason Juneteenth was added is Juneteenth became a federal holiday.
Right, exactly. And then this is, this is just a state holiday.
Well, it's religious.
Religious, okay.
The only question I do have, yeah, the only question I do have on the calendar, Peter, is, and I guess if we have it, we have it, but is the Veterans Day observed on November 10th? Is that a real thing?
It's always on Tuesday.
No, it's always the 11th.
On the 11th.
But I just, with the 11th being a Saturday, so I know my job, I don't have it 10th as a holiday. I guess that's why I'm asking. So if we establish it, we establish it. Or if it's a, we can look back on it, I don't know.
Yeah, it's been, my memory is that when Veterans Day falls on a weekend, there's an observance that takes place during the week.
Okay. That's fine, I mean, that's, we establish anyway, that works for me. So is there any further discussion on the calendar? I'll be looking for a motion to approve the calendar as presented, which, just so people know, if we don't have snow next year, the last day of school is June 11th. So I'll be looking for a motion to approve the calendar as presented.
May I make a motion? For a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
New business establishment of the next school committee meeting, Tuesday, May 23rd, 7:00 PM here in the library. I know it's late, but we have one informational item that I wanna read it. It was a letter from the superintendent to the roommate boosters to Melissa Merrick, their president. "On behalf of the students and families of the Abington Public Schools, thank you for your thoughtful, kind, and supportive work for our student athletes. Your dedicated and creative collaboration with us has always provided benefits to our students that we could never achieve without you. Most recently, you generously provided Abington High School varsity leather and jackets to the members of our unified sports team. This gesture was a special moment for the individual students, the unified program in the Abington Public Schools. Beyond that significant moment, we will continue to feel a heartfelt benefit. These jackets will be worn by the receiving students for many years to come with the purest green wave pride. So thank you to the boosters and Melissa Merrick for providing mostly unified athletes at their basketball game in March, I think it was." Some dates to remember, Saturday, April 29th, Abington Town Elections at Beaverbrook and Almishy School from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. I'm gonna go off-script a little bit on the next one. Melissa actually told me that their meeting is not gonna be on May 4th, she doesn't have the date yet, so we can scratch that. I did wanna add that I saw an email come through today. Wednesday, May 3rd, the LPAC will have their meeting at 7:00 PM in the seminar room downstairs in the high school. And I got this email this morning. AEF is having their meeting on Wednesday, May 10th. Danielle, do you know where, I think it's in Town Hall?
Yeah, maybe in one of the bottom.
One of the rooms in Town Hall when you first walk in. And also, they have an ongoing keychain fundraiser with Rustic, I think it's Rustic Mall. Details are on their Facebook page or AEFGreenWave.org is their website. Before we adjourn, I did want to acknowledge that tonight is Wendy Hathles' last night, serving as a member of the school, serving as a member of the school committee during the meeting. Wendy's been on the school committee for eight years. She's been re-elected three times since then, in 2016, 2017, 2020, in the middle of a pandemic with me. So Wendy, thank you for your time, thank you for volunteering. I appreciate all you've given to the committee. Peter, I don't know, do you want, why don't you add something to it?
Wendy, you and I have had some, you know it, some knock-down, drag-'em-out battles over the years. But you've also been a school committee member during some of the most challenging times, certainly in the most challenging times in my career. And you've always listened, you've always, we've disagreed at times. And no matter which side of an issue I, and I've always believed that your, you know, your heart was in the right place. Doesn't mean we agreed, but your heart was in the right place. And so with being a school member, you get zero pay. Nobody up here gets any money. And they give of their time and their energy and their emotion, and it's tough. And I'm just, I'm fortunate to be able to work with everybody, and I, you know, appreciate your service to the kids in Abington, for sure.
Thank you very much. I just wanna thank everybody as well. I just want to thank everybody as well. I want to thank my family, my husband and my daughter, for their commitment along with me, all that have supported me. I definitely want to thank you, Peter, for always coming there to allow me to vent and carry me out. And like you said, we haven't always been on the same side, but I definitely know I change my mind at times, and you can change mine as well. And I know it hasn't been easy, but I, I just want to say, throughout all of this, you have been an awesome superintendent, and there is no doubt on how I've ever felt about the way that you lead your team and this school system and the love that you have for our students in Abingtonstown, and I appreciate that very, very much. And you can officially retire from me texting me constantly. And then Felicia, I just want to thank you, I know that you're going to do so awesome as our next superintendent. And basically, you know, I, my daughter's in the 11th grade, it wouldn't be wise, I don't think, as you get older, you kind of, you don't really have, you know, your kids are smaller, I think that's when you kind of have to be on school day. And as you get older, you kind of, you know, things don't affect your kids as much, you know, or the kids around them. So, I definitely think that this is suitable for people with, you know, elementary, school kids, middle school kids, it definitely encourages them to get involved and like their voices be heard. So, just also want to thank all the school committee members I've worked with, and especially want to thank the students of Abington. I have never been more proud. Every time I walk into, you know, walk on a field or in, on a court or at a musical or an art exhibit or just seeing you guys, you know, at all the events filming, I've been so proud of you. I feel like you're like my own kids, you know, just looking up and seeing kids like from when they were little to growing up and moving on out. So, thank you for all you do, and, you know, just keep spreading green a little bit everywhere you go. So, thank you everybody.
Thank you, Wendy. Enjoy your free time, enjoy your two last few days of the month, I have a little bit of a welcome here. So, with that, I'll be looking for a motion to adjourn from you.
Oh, I will, how many make that motion?
A second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much, it was a long night.